Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your leniency with our break. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to continue. We have three more speakers before we deliberate. The first speaker is Mike, it looks like Mike Ayers, followed by John Denniston. Mike?
Mike Ayers, yeah. Uh, Mike Ayers, I live at 732 Vasquez with my girlfriend Shirley. And I've been there for 10 years or so, or 11, and after coming down from Alaska. I originally went to work building bridges for C.C. Mars in May '84 on the 92-101 interchange. And I understand that that bridge at the time was very deficient. It was a, it was a, what do you call it? A clover leaf? It was a, it was a wood interchange, and it was very deficient, and it needed to be replaced. This bridge is much different. And I would urge the council to reconsider replacing this important historic bridge.
Thank you very much. John, followed by our last speaker will be, pardon me if I don't pronounce this correctly, it looks like Valdir Faria Filio. And I apologize if I butchered that.
Thank you, Mayor. John Denniston. My wife and I own The Crow's Nest through our ownership entity at 406 Main Street. Thank you for allowing us to participate in the discussion. The main point that I'd like to make to the city council and to you, Mr. Mayor, is that I believe, we believe, that the ranking system is fundamentally flawed. And it's flawed because, Mayor, you have spoken eloquently about your desire to vote in favor of the option that helps businesses. And yet, there is, in the ranking selection criteria, there is no criteria for helping businesses. The one that is arguably closest is number two, and I'd like to read it to you and the city council. "Construct project in a manner that maintains at least one lane of traffic at most times during construction." That sounds like it was written to favor Option 3, because that is what Option 3 does. And in fact, if you look at the scoring matrix on that factor two, with all due respect, the staff has Option 3 ranked as a 4, and Option 5A as a 2. If you want to understand which option impacts the merchants the least, is most favorable to it, you've heard from the people. How could it possibly be, if number 2 is the factor that's looking at the impact on business, how could it possibly be that Option 3 outweighs Option 5A? And so I'm here to speak resoundingly for Option 5A and to make the point that, again, with all due respect to staff, Option, Factor 2 is incorrectly written. It is biased in favor of Option 3. Option 2 should say something like, "Which option has the least disruption on business?" And on that score, you know the answer. It's a 5 to 0 in favor of Option 5A. And so if you did that math, you would find that Option 5A wins your scoring matrix. That's before you get to the factor that other speakers have spoken to very nicely, which is our heritage. The historic preservation of historic buildings and structures, which the building is one. Built 113 years ago, before the 1906 earthquake, it's historic. It's beautiful because of its history. And yet, there's not in the scoring matrix anything on historic preservation. And you can look through the laws of California and states and counties and municipalities, historic preservation is important. And if you add that as a sixth factor, for sure 5A is going to wipe out Option 3 mathematically on your own matrix. And so the main point I'd like to make is that I would strongly recommend that the city council not vote tonight. You don't have the right matrix. Have the staff go back and re-rank this based upon the right ranking factors. What you'll find is 5A prevails, then please come back and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your kind words. And the last speaker is Valdir, and I apologize if I didn't pronounce that properly. As a Koalcheck, I'm often mispronounced, so I could take it pretty seriously.
Good evening, Mayor, and Half Moon Bay Council, City Council. I had a lot of points to make tonight, but everyone pretty much made them. I'm in favor of 5A, obviously. And my question to the city council is that if the Office of Historic Preservation of the state of California has been consulted, and the best means of preserving the bridge, but obviously, without the different options to replace the bridge, I pretty much make a guess of it hasn't been consulted. And I did some research at home, and it seems that our bridge is actually qualified to be protected under the California Point of Historic Interest because of the age of the bridge, the way the bridge was constructed, and the value it is to us in Half Moon Bay and also to San Mateo County because of the way the engineering of the bridge is. Now, a couple citizens made points that they traveled to Europe, and they traveled to South America, Central America, and they've seen many, many different bridges. I too been to South America, studied in South America, actually. I visited towns that were 300 years old, and they had bridges that honestly had one lane, and the bridge was 300 years old, and it's still standing today. And the cities had options to bring it down, but the people voted to keep it because it was their historic treasure.
Really?
It was a, yes. And it was, in my opinion, was a crummy old bridge. It was hideous, but the people loved it. It was their jewel. It was their treasure. It was their baby. And it's, I feel the same way, even though I'm a new resident here in Half Moon Bay, everyone pretty much share, I believe shares a sentiment that this bridge is our jewel. It's our sentiment, and it's our historic treasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. And before I turn it over to the council for discussion, I have a comment to make. And that is, I don't want there to be any mistake in this room. This, there is no sense, in no sense is there an us and them kind of a situation here. This is us and us. This is our city. It's our community. I hear you. We hear you. And we have a lot of factors to weigh in to make a decision. But we're doing it in a sense of our community. And so I hope you take that feedback from me as well. And with that, I open it up to the council for discussion.
I just want to make a comment. And I know a lot of people have been very critical about the criteria that staff was told to weigh on the projects. Do not blame staff. This was discussed at a council meeting. We all brought forth our criteria, and from that, the criteria were selected. So if you think that staff selected them, you're wrong. The five of us here voted on that. So if you had been attending the meeting, you would have known that it was us that did that. And in fact, some of the things that I wanted as number one were not number one. So this has been a consensus drawing situation, and I want you to understand that. We really did look at it. We heard the public from our other meetings of what they wanted. They didn't want the disruptions. I questioned about the length of, some people wanted the bridge to take three years, and I told them that was unreasonable, that to have somebody in disruption for three years. So it's not that Mr. Candati did the criteria, we did the criteria. So I just want to set the record straight on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think it's our turn to speak now. We've been very kind and generous, so please respect our opinions. We respected yours. That's all I, oh, thank you. I appreciate that. We need a little applause, and I apologize for my throat and nose tonight and not feeling well. And if it wasn't such an important issue, I would have probably stayed home, but it is that serious tonight. There's a couple of things. Number one, this is not money-driven. This is practicality. We have to be practical in this community. We've had some very difficult times, as the speaker has commented. We're coming back. We're trying to do the right things for the communities. And as Councilmember Patrick stated, safety and health was our first concern and economic impact on our community. I walked Burlingame Avenue recently and visited with them. And they're a cosmetic situation over there. And they're under two years of construction on Burlingame Avenue. And yes, it has impacted some of the businesses, but some of them still have their clientele coming down because they have done mitigation with the city. They've talked about other ways to get over to Burlingame Avenue. They've done free parking, and they've just kind of made it accessible. So we're not cosmetic. We are safety, in my opinion, for one. So I have researched it, and as the number seven speaker said, Kim, trust me, for a year and a half, I've lived this. I live it every day and every night thinking about it. And how do I make this decision? How do I make a decision to protect the future of our coast side and to protect future generations? And let me tell you, I've had four U.S. Presidents administrations appoint me to commissions and boards to make tough decisions throughout the last 40 years. I've had four governors appoint me to make tough decisions. And I've made decisions that cost millions and hundreds of millions of dollars to companies and corporations and cities. And I told someone the other day, "This decision I'm making here in our community is my friends." I talked to Jackie Speer personally. She and I had a visit. She says, "You still have to govern." That's why we're here. Thousands of people vote for you over the years. You have to step up and vote. You have to vote what's best for the future. You can't be paralyzed by the past. Naturally, we like our historic look of that bridge, but it's the arch. It's not the bridge. And so could we not build a new bridge, safe for our community, for future generations, and have it look old? Can we not save the plaque? Can we not do some pieces of the, excuse me, the material? And I just, it's very special tonight that I have privilege to this little book here that no one's going to have or see. And it is the voter register of Half Moon Bay in 1906. These are the individuals that stepped up and said, "Let's build a concrete bridge over that wooden bridge in the creek there." And just some names, the Alves, the Azovados, the Bellows, the Vanginis, the Campbells. And I'm going to just give you, the women didn't get the vote sadly in those days. The Benedetti, the Diggses, the Francises, the Johnsons. You know, these were people that made a decision, the Silvers, the Quinlands, the Rathbones. It's just pretty amazing that this little piece of material came to me. And they made that decision. And from my perspective, and I'm just going to give you a little bit more time, it's hard to make a tough decision. And I think when they made that decision to build a concrete bridge, they said, "You know, we've got to build something that's going to last." And they did. They built something that served us well for 100 years. They gave us a gift that we can be thankful for. And I think we have to give a gift for future generations. We have to govern, I have to govern for the future personally. I can't govern for the past. I love my historical stuff. As I say to Kim, I can't even sleep at night over this thing because I'm governing with my friends. And that's a tough thing. It's easy when you're in Congress because you've got lobbyist people coming by. And, you know, I think, I think we have to be careful not to be prisoners of the past. We have to shape the future, and let's leave something for the future that will be of value for generations to come. And I know you're going to disagree with me, but I'm telling you, this is some of my opinions, and I've listened and respected your opinions, and I hope whatever decision we make tonight, you respect our opinions. I do want to comment, ask the city attorney, because the committee for Green Foothills attorney commented about all these SEQA issues, and I'm quite familiar with SEQA. I don't believe that SEQA starts until we actually go through the planning process. Is that correct?
Well, it is part of the planning process, but one thing that you need in order to do a SEQA analysis is you need to have identified a project. So until you've identified a project, you don't have a baseline from which to evaluate the environmental impacts of the project. So, you know, I read the letter from Whitworth Park, and I know Bill Park, and I respect that firm. I think it raises a lot of important points, particularly with regard to the historic resources regulations, both the state and the local, environmental impacts that we're going to confront, impacts on the creek, potential sensitive habitat areas. But those are all impacts that have to be analyzed as you go through the permitting process. I don't believe SEQA requires that analysis to precede the selection of a project, because then what would you study?
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just conclude here. You know, we're probably talking two years in the permitting and planning process. That's just my hunch. I could be wrong.
Well, that's a reasonable estimate. And again, as we go through that process, there are going to be conditions attached, and it may affect ultimately the options that are available to you. So what we're really asking the council to do is tell us what your preferred option is so that we can initiate that process. What gets finally approved may not be your preferred option, so you have to keep that in mind when we go through the permit process. Then many agencies are going to weigh in. Ultimately, we're going to have to get a coastal development permit. I think it's fairly reasonable to assume that someone might appeal it to the Coastal Commission, and they will have the ultimate authority to either grant or deny the project or to impose conditions upon it that may affect the bridge design.
That's for now. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fraser.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Mueller, for your comments and sharing some things that had occurred before. I think, just to start out with, I want to thank you all for coming here. I think the last time we had an audience like this was either model airplanes or horses on the beach. So it's always something that people are very passionate about, that you come out like this. But I think it's really important to know that the council or myself didn't wake up one morning and decide, "Let's go fix a bridge." Believe me, this would have been the last thing I would have imagined doing at this time. We could have kicked the can down the road and left it for another council, and somewhere along the way, something might have happened to that bridge. But you don't know. Just sure enough is, we never knew when Devil's Slide was going to go out. It was unpredictable. And look at the havoc that came with that, because you didn't know when the road was going to go out, and everything stopped. People did lose business. People were out of jobs. And Lord knows, we all had to go around the long way. And now we finally have a tunnel. As one of the speakers had said earlier, it took 40 years to do that. We have been aggressive. We don't have, didn't have a pile of money sitting there and decide what could we do? Because believe me, if we had $8 million to do something, I would have chosen many other things, too. We've been very aggressive the last few years going after grants. This is what cities do. If you don't go after grants, you pay for it yourself. You pay, or you don't get it. So we've been very aggressive in doing that for a multitude of things, and this is one of them. But this didn't come up lightly, and I think that's really important to know. And there's been so many different meetings that have come, and we've listened to you. We've expressed a lot of different opinions about, and we have gone out and listened to people in the community. And there's no one that has more of a passion impact to this than those merchants who are closest to the bridge. And naturally so. You do, because you will be impacted, no matter what happens. Repair, replace, there will be an impact somehow. But I think as we talk about the historical part of it, it's, I'm going to go back just a little and just tell you what that bridge is really composed of. Now, when concrete reinforcement first started, it was a patent, a man named Ransom. He lived in San Francisco, and it was in 1884 that he received the patent. The very first bridge that was used with reinforced concrete was in 1889, and it's in Golden Gate Park. Now, one of the things he did was with a steel tube that was twisted, and it was squared. And that, with squaring it, made the cement bond. And that was revolutionary 113 years ago. But as you know, time goes by, stainless steel rusts, and we can all figure out that concrete and the way it's mixed has evolved quite a bit from 100 years ago. In fact, when that bridge was built, it was only supposed to last 50 years. So I definitely think we got our money's worth of that bridge, too. But it's important to know that it needs to be replaced at this point. And in listening to so many of you, many of the options are especially the merchants. And that's who I'm really focusing on, and the merchants who are closest there. They have said they wanted to have at least one lane open for that go-on so they could continue with their business. And as our city attorney said, "This is not happening tomorrow. It's not happening in a year from now. It's probably not happening two years from now, because you do know the permitting process that we have to go through." Probably wouldn't start this for about three years, but you've got to start somewhere to do anything. Because although you can build a bridge in the middle of Iraq or Afghanistan, or even the bridge up in Washington that fell in the last year, they replaced it in six months, that bridge wasn't on the California coastline. We have so many more requirements than any of those other bridges outside of California, and especially outside of the California coast that we have to do. So there's a lot of things to consider, but I want you to know, whatever direction we go tonight, this was not taken lightly. This was not just something we picked up to do, and it was not something that we had a pile of money sitting there and we just decided to go impact people's lives. Because as John mentioned, we live here, too. We cross there. And that bridge was originally built 113 years ago for horse and buggy. I'm sure the builder never dreamed that a three-ton Chevy truck would be driving over it daily, thousands of them.
Thank you, Marina. Naomi or Alan, any comments?
Mine isn't. It's really a question about one of the projects. On 5A, which we've heard so much about from the residents, my question to you, I don't know if it's to you, Tony, or to the consultant, is once, say that we decide we're going to do 5A, and we're in the middle of this process, and so we're opening it up, and then all of a sudden, we find out, holy moly, this thing is in really bad shape. So now we have everything open, and the road, there's nothing there. So what do we do? When are we going to find out what the extensive or not extensive condition of that, the pillars? Because I'm afraid that once we get started, and we have our permits, and we're going through this process, and that happens, do we have to start all over with other permits because now we have to do a different project?
Well, there are two aspects to 5A. One is the rehabilitation and the strengthening of the walls, the spanner walls and the wing walls. And that is supposed to be one phase of it. The second is the removal of the existing pavement portion, the deck, and that's when it will be closed for several weeks. And that will involve also removing some fill material and replacing it with a lighter material, installing a water impervious concrete cap, and then finally constructing a new pavement over the top of that. Those are the two aspects of it. I suppose either could involve the discovery of additional problems, and that is a question for the engineers.
May I have a follow-up quick with that while the engineer's getting ready to think? It still would not meet federal highway safety standards, though. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So it still would not meet federal highway safety standards for two emergency vehicles crossing at one time?
That's correct.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Are you suggesting that you commit to a rehabilitation scheme, then you do the testing as part of that scheme and realize that it's not feasible, it's beyond repair?
If I may, her question was that once the roadbed, if the roadbed is taken up and it's exposed, the road is closed, and at that point, you discover that, I believe you're saying, you discover that you can't go forward with that project, do you, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you saying then, what's the process from that point? Do you have to start over? Or is there a quick fix? What do you do in that contingency? Separate, Naomi?
Yes, because...
Before we proceed, we would assess these types of risks and these measures to account for what can go wrong and have a contingency plan laid out. And we would try to remove any type of a risk that would lead to a catastrophic situation that once you remove it, you're stuck and you can't repair it. So ahead of time, that might require maybe doing some testing or some other things that we would eliminate these risks. So as we go into it, we would eliminate those risks, yeah.
So we would not be at risk, because I don't want the merchants and anybody be at risk if we say we're going to do this and then we do fall into something like that.
There may be risks that once we open up the barrel, we look at it, and there would be additional repairs that would take more time for the closure, yes. That might be one of the risks that we find out. Instead of having that roadway closed, let's say for four or five weeks, it might be eight weeks or something. So that's one of the risks that we, yeah, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Alan?
Let's just clear up a few things first. This hasn't been something like Marina said that we just popped up with a couple weeks ago. This has been an ongoing concern of the city since the review put pictures of the bridge on the front page showing cracks and the Caltrans reports. Now, during that process, when the different engineers suggested replacing the bridge, we basically had no public input to say, "Gee, we don't like that option. Could you do something else?" So the direction at the time seemed to make sense. Nobody was coming to us and saying, "We'd like something different." And let's not forget, too, I think there was another engineer who told Caltrans that Etrin Span, the Bay Bridge, it's solid as a rock. Even if there's a big earthquake, nothing will fall down. I don't think he works for Caltrans anymore. At the same time, and this is really important, the council has been listening and is listening. And I will tell you, the last couple of meetings we had, the Business Roundtable, the two meetings at Pasta Moon, I've tried to open my ears up and listen very carefully to what was being said. And part of what came across to me, and this was part of the process, this is a process, is when you look at the options to replace the bridge, and I will tell you frankly, from the get-go, it made all the sense in the world to replace the bridge. And I've told Dave Creston this many times, the arch is gone. We can't see the arch anymore. It's so overgrown, and it's an area where we really just can't go in there and every time we want to just start trimming vegetation in that creek area. What I did care about was the upper structure, the piece everybody sees every day, the piece we drive across, the piece we walk across. We want that to be historic and look basically the same as it does today. But as we're going through this process with these last few meetings with the merchants, the one thing that struck me was, we would be taking the current bridge, 22 feet wide, wherever the lanes are at their narrowest point, and we'd be stretching it out to provide shoulders and bike lanes and so forth, which are really good things to have, no doubt about that. But what also struck me is that on both ends of the bridge, you don't match. You know, we have a nice, wide, 64-foot bridge, but where it hits in front of Pasta Moon and Zabala House, it has to narrow back down, and the other end towards Coffee Company, the same thing has to happen. So as much as I really liked the concept of a brand-new, and I especially liked the clear span, the Coastal Commission has said to our staff, "We would prefer you have clear span, get out of the creek, get the arch out of there, and free the creek area back up again." That made a lot of sense. But listening again during these two meetings and realizing, if we... But listening again during these two meetings, and realizing, if we end up with virtually the same structure, possibly a little bit wider, I would like to see 12-foot lanes, and we talked to the engineers, and it seems to be doable that we can, that the slab that gets put on top could get stretched a little, to make sure we have 12-foot lanes. By the way, how wide are 18-wheelers that go in there every day? They're eight feet wide, okay? When they cross that bridge and they go through that curve, if you've ever been there, there's not a lot of room, okay? At one of the meetings, somebody talked about one of the, I won't mention any names in here, but somebody's truck knocked off part of the end of the bridge one time. I was on the bridge one day, and a young lady came flying on, didn't see the curve, and crossed the double yellow. Thank God there was nobody coming her way. Other people have hit the bridge at points. But at the end of the day, if we do 5A, if it's doable, and we end up with virtually what's there but modern, new ADA sidewalks on both sides, I have to be honest, I'm okay with that. I wasn't in the beginning, but after listening and thinking about what's on either end of the bridge, keeping the bridge roughly the size it's in and the shape it's in, it's not going to be the end of the world. Now, keep in mind, let's just be very clear about 5A. There are several factors you all have to consider. We would have to do testing. We have no idea, until we start the testing, what the outcomes are going to be. But the opinion of three different engineering firms has been, the bridge appears to be structurally rehabilitatable. That's what we're working off of. In the dry season, the creek work will happen, going in there, fixing the spandrel walls and the other doohickeys, I can't tell you what they are. But that happens in the dry season, no closure. In the winter, sometime after November, this is very important, the roadbed comes off. The top of our bridge, our beloved bridge, is destroyed. Do we all understand that? It comes off. It's gone. Now, once that's off, then the people can go down into the arch, take out the dirt, inspect the arch, and hopefully, I think that's the point Naomi was trying to make, we don't discover something catastrophic and like, oh, my God, we're going to shut, the bridge will be shut down for another six months or a year. That's the last thing we want to have to have happen. But we're relying on experts to tell us, it appears like this project should proceed okay, per the schedule we've talked about. Once the dirt's out, and whatever repairs have to happen, then new filler gets put in, lighter filler, and then a slab, a pre-stress concrete slab gets put on top. And part of what the slab does is it provides water protection, so that water can't leak through and affect, you know, the bottom of the arch and so forth. Here's the other thing, too. I think we all agree, and we've heard, that the costs are going to be somewhere in the range of, let's say about a million and a half. That's about double the cost to the city, to you and I, to do 5A. Now, certainly, we can go after historical money, which is a very different process than going after federal highway money, because, you know, they have it already set aside, and they want new, modern bridges. If we don't do that, we have no guarantee that the historical money is going to be available to us. And keep in mind, too, the original bridge had no sidewalks. The sidewalks were added later. If you looked at that picture very carefully, you'll see those metal doohickeys that are holding up that wooden sidewalk. If you've ever been underneath there, they don't look very stable. So what has to happen, and several engineers talked to us, I don't know if Chad's still here, the new sidewalks would be built independent of the bridge. They would be clear-span sidewalks with, like, pillars going down into the creek on both sides. When they're finished, they would appear to be part of the bridge, but really, they'd be two new structures. So that could create another little issue if somebody said, well, gee, historically, that doesn't match the original bridge. Okay, you know, we'd have to argue that point. So where I'm heading is, 5A potentially, and we don't know this yet, could cost a city quite a bit more money than doing a project of a new bridge where we know we've got guaranteed federal money. I'm not saying it's the end of the world, there's ways around that. I've talked about that before, and I think the merchants have agreed that's something we can approach. So at the end of the day, let me tell you where I'm at. I think we need to go through and do the 5A testing, and find out if that option is doable. If it shows it's doable, my inclination would be, then proceed with 5A and drop the option of a new bridge. If, on the other hand, we discover 5A is not doable, and we don't know that yet for certain, and I think we all have to realize that a new bridge has to be Plan B. And I agree, we can't kick the can down the road. That bridge might stay there for another three, four, five, six years, but if something happens, just like when the Bay Bridge failed, and that bridge is shut down for an extended period of time, I can't imagine how big the crowd's going to be here, and how upset the merchants are going to be that Main Street's closed for maybe years. We don't want that to happen. So I'm willing to put a motion on the floor tonight to postpone the decision and do the testing of 5A. Once we have that in our hands... Now, this isn't about a popularity contest. This is about what makes the most sense for the city. And like I said, Mark Heathman had a point. He said, are you really listening? Have you guys already made your mind up? And I will tell you, in those meetings, I listened, and I really started seeing the wide bridge versus what we have today. And I understand the concerns of the merchants. I truly do. And I think this, at the end of the day, for everybody, for everybody concerned, makes the most sense. You know, if we end up with 5A, we're not going to fall off the cliff and die. It's not the end of the world. We're not, you know, we don't have a new bridge. But it, to me, it's what I'm hearing from, the people I respect, the people that make a living on Main Street, these people have concerns, and they've looked at this carefully, and I've listened. So I think, from our standpoint, this makes the most sense. I realize we all have a different opinion, but that's the reason there's five of us. Thank you.
So my, thank you, Alan, and thank you, counsel, for your comments. I've got some comments, and they have got some questions. So my comments are these. So I obviously have read all of the engineering reports. I've also gone through the one-inch-thick packet of Caltrans calculations, and played with all those assumptions. I've also toured and inspected the bridge personally, and looked at it from photos from above, and all these other things. And as one of the speakers mentioned, I did make a statement, I stand by that, I want to do what's best for the businesses in Main Street. And I'm willing to go against the grain of that on a couple of factors, if they're factors. One of them is safety. I will do the right thing and make a decision, and hang my hat on safety every time, and so I will have questions about that. I also, but in terms of wanting to understand what is best for the economics of the community, and what is best for the business of the community, I obviously talked to many, if not all, the Main Street merchants, including owners of buildings and whatnot. And to validate some assumptions I had, I also reached out to an economist at Stanford, and had a discussion with him about potential impacts to a community. I described the situation. I simplified it to a couple of different things, like a short-term fix that's interrupted versus a long-term fix that leaves lanes open. This gentleman was familiar with Half Moon Bay, been here many times, actually knew the bridge, we talked about it. And that feedback came back as this, and the way I posed it was, my understanding at that time, so several weeks ago, my understanding at that time was that, for our option two, which is a short-duration, replace-the-bridge option, versus option three or five, which are, build lanes, would take up to 18 to 24 months of construction, I said, which is more advantageous? Obviously, neither is good. Which is more advantageous for the community economically, or which is least disadvantageous, rather? And the feedback was that a long-term construction zone can potentially have, and would likely have, a more negative effect on the community, on business practices. And we talked a lot of issues around it, like, how do you mitigate that? If you have a short-term project versus a long-term project? A short project, you could do other initiatives to create interest in the community that would die out if it was a longer-term project. And so I had that discussion, and I thought that was instructive, and it was helpful to think about things that were, are going to be quick. I think Alan's analogy previously was, if you have four cavities, and you go to the dentist, do you go, you know, go and get them done, one shot, or do you spread it out over six months? And so, just a piece of information I gathered, I added to this. Then also talked again to the merchants at Main Street about the importance of, oh, I'm sorry, before I did that, I also consulted a business consultant has a national reputation. And I'm not saying their names, because A, they didn't say I could, and B, I don't want everybody to go beat them up. And that business consultant reinforced that economist's opinion. But in talking with the business owners, their clear feedback was, we really, it's important to us that we have a lane of traffic open. Even though, Rick, you say, we could do marketing and promotions and activities, and have a trolley take people around, and put in temporary pedestrian bridges, all these things, we still want lanes of traffic open. And so I consulted a construction manager from Keywit, who was involved with our little tunnel up the way there, and he mentioned the concept of adding, you know, other variations that could get involved, adding a Bailey Bridge, which is a temporary bridge structure that could potentially go in place. So I'm just sharing that, because I think that was very, it was insightful for me to get that, because it was just some new information, because my initial inclination, much like Alan, was, I wanted to look at this bridge, and I thought, well, if it's a 24 out of 100, and it's deteriorating, and the most famous name on it right now is from the Serrano gang underneath it, and graffiti, that, it made sense to me. There's no part of me that wants to change the look of the bridge, meaning I want it to be a historical-looking bridge, or an aesthetically pleasing bridge, although, if you took a close look at it, she's not a pretty girl. But so I was initially inclined toward a replacement option, and that option, that I think is the best replacement option, is actually option two, with some variations, because it's fast, because you can do mitigation around business impact, because it gets the arch, it's the bridge out of the creek, which is preferred by the Coastal Commission. And it is also the, it is least expensive in terms of total cost of replacement options. But that's where my head was at initially. And with that, I had questions. And the tipping point for me is around functional obsolescence and structural deficiency. And it comes down to safety. So our first criteria of our five was safety. And I will tell you, in my most recent walk-through of the bridge, I took photos and whatnot, I was reminded of, in 2000, the year 2000, when I moved here, that driving across the bridge, I actually struck, I was driving south on Main Street, and actually, as you turned the curve into the bridge, I actually struck the bridge. I go, oh, how often can that happen? Well, apparently, a lot, because I think there's a problem with the geometry of the bridge, which Caltrans pointed out, and if you look at that, you'll see it's all marred up, because it gets struck probably pretty regularly. So with that, regarding safety, if our bridge is at 22 feet, and the reason safety is important, I'm thinking safety in terms of bridge traffic, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, and all sharing that whole structure at one time. What is a safe width? What makes it safe width? Is it 24 feet, 26 feet? And at some point, that, I believe that number, you pick a number, you're like, oh, it's got to be 88 feet wide, right? And then, at some point, you narrow that down to what's safe, and then what also qualifies for the reconstruction reimbursement?
I think some of the criteria that we would design a new bridge are based on Astro criteria, and those are recommended widths. And they're generally include, based on the daily traffic, the volume of traffic. And they're generally pretty generous. And the problem is, it's very dependent on the particular location. And there's a lot of interesting or different features of this location. As you mentioned, you've got a much wider approach on the north side, and then you've got diagonal parked cars on the south side. You've got people probably crossing quite a bit. So it's not a typical situation, it's where engineering judgment can come in. And a lot of people have mentioned, I've done other bridges where they want to keep the bridge narrow, because a wider bridge encourages faster speed. And in some situations, that's probably true. It's traffic calming to keep it narrow. Obviously, the narrower you get, at some point, you're knocking into the barrier. So obviously, you've hit a minimum there. And if there was a bicyclist there at that time, they're squished, that's obviously bad. So it really depends on the user profile. If you've got mainly local folks, and they're familiar with the bridge, and they go slow, it probably does fine, which this one apparently has. But there's some safety issues, I think, and as you've alluded to. So there's a recommended width that sort of is encouraged along with the federal funding. But there's always exceptions. The little bridge had finished a while ago, and the town of Rossumarin County wanted to maintain as narrow a bridge as they could for the traffic calming. And they had a crosswalk, and a school, and a stop sign, and, you know, parking in driveways immediately before and after the bridge. So it was a very unique situation, such as this is, where you kind of use your best judgment. And I think there's kind of a bare minimum below which, at least federal funding from the program you've got your grant from, will not participate. And I think we looked at what that may be. They don't advertise that minimum number. They give you the recommended number. But they will accept, you know, narrower widths with proper justification, down to a point where that scoring factor that results in the sufficiency rating going too low, in other words, it has to be wide enough such that it gets the right score, so it comes off that eligible list. And I think in this case, they want some at least minimum shoulder, minimum lane width. And I, for instance, in the town of Rossumarin, which was a similar situation, similar traffic patterns, I think we got by with 11-foot lane and a minor three-foot shoulder. That would pass as a very minimal bike lane. Also, a short bridge, as others have alluded to, the problem is very short-lived. You're off the bridge quickly, as opposed to a tunnel, so that's another factor. But I think we had 11 plus a three-foot shoulder on both sides, which is 14 and 14, 28 feet in between traffic, for traffic in between the barriers. Sidewalks could be outside of that. So that's about a six-foot increase in width there. I think from the funding standpoint, the minimum funding that Caltrans is going to want to see is probably around 28 feet, maybe, maybe with some lobbying, or I don't know, arm-twisting. And in justification, it could be somewhat lower.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, and by the way, with regard to, my opinion is, with regard to testing and restoration of the bridge, it's, in my mind, it is a foregone conclusion that the bridge is repairable. I believe it can be repaired, but can the safety issues be addressed? And that, again, for me, is the pivot point, because I know it can be repaired with high confidence, at least I have high confidence that it can be repaired. And that's what the engineers told us, that's what the analysis told us, and that's what logic tells me. But can we overcome safety and considerations? I believe that will allow us to overcome structural considerations. And the next question I have around safety is, will... And the next question I have around safety is, will Option 5A address geometry considerations? By geometry, I mean, if you look at it from above, where a mayor allegedly struck the bridge, and others have, and there's a curve in the road, which is fine and nice, you feel like you're entering the town, but it also is a pinch point, a choke point, and also a safety concern.
The sharp turn at the north end will still be there. The lane width will still be there. Those are the main safety issues that have been identified, and so that will still be a concern afterwards.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, with Option 5A, that we don't fix geometry, we don't fix safety in terms of width, but we fix structure. And so, related to that, the, Alan made a comment about the bike lanes being separate from the bridge. Is that, in all these options, is that the design consideration, or is that yet to be determined?
I think we discuss sidewalks being separate. So if you're suggesting that the separate structures be multi-use, pedestrian and bicycle, generally, the standards for those are somewhat wider, up to 10 to 12 feet, I think, if you expect bicycles and pedestrians to share the walkway. Generally, bicycles share the road in some sort of fashion, either in a shoulder. A lot of times, getting bicyclists to leave the road and go up the ramp onto the multi-use path, a lot of them don't even bother, right? I mean, they're, they stay with traffic. So sometimes, we're fooling ourselves, thinking we're providing a multi-use path for bikes and peds, when the bikes, you know, it's only the kids whose parents require them to use that, that end up using it.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. And Alan, I'm sorry, I have one more question related to this. So then, if we went down the path of Option 5A to restore the bridge, repair the bridge, which, again, submit that is, in high confidence, it's repairable. At some cost, it is repairable. What's the impact to the city financially in terms of, what does it mean to us in terms of our ability to get future funding, state and federal funding for the bridge? If we do the option that federal government doesn't support, and they're not going to fund, does that mean that we are then accountable for all future maintenance, repairs, replacements, no matter what, going forward? Or is that not the situation? I guess I heard somewhere, I thought I heard somewhere, that if we did not bring the bridge up to federal standards, but we chose to invest our own community's resources to repair the bridge and leave it obsolete, but because we like it that way, then we don't qualify for future financial support. Is there any truth to that? Are you aware of that?
Essentially, repair.
Yeah. Let me answer that one. So if we go for the different grant, you know, that will be just the historic grant program. Under that grant program, we will get the grant with the condition that city will be responsible for whatever happens to the bridge from that point on, and that there won't be any more grant money available. So that's only if we go for the historic grant.
Okay. So if we go for the historic grant, then 50, 40, 50, 60, 80 years from now, then the premise of that grant is, that's on the burden of the community. Okay. And so, Alan, I'm sorry, I have more questions, but go ahead. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. Look, I think we need to be very clear. From what I'm hearing, if we don't add shoulders, if we can take the bridge up, say, 12-foot lanes, which I, I think I've heard everybody say it, you know, to gain a little bit on each side with that new slab, it sounds doable. But we're going to end up with 12-foot lanes, that's it. There is no way to have shoulders. So that takes that off, that part off the table. I don't see the sidewalks being any wider than, I don't know what standard is, maybe six feet or something. So the bikes are going to stay on the bridge. There is going to be nowhere else for the bikes to go but continue off Main Street, across the bridge, and on. And that's what we do today. So we just need to be very clear that without shoulders, we probably, I've totally eliminated any kind of federal funds. And if we just do the, hopefully, 12-foot lanes and new sidewalks, then there are no bike lanes either. So we have a little bit of an issue there with, I think, from a safety standpoint, having the bikes on the, on there. But if we, where the bridge comes out back onto Main Street, if we do the 5A, I think we've talked about this, Mo, where you can actually widen things out a little bit, could you not kind of at least clean up the geometry for people entering the bridge from 92? Could we make that curve just a little bit less severe?
Well, Option 5A is to rehab the existing bridge, so we are stuck with the existing geometry, unless we build a new bridge or widen it. If we widen it, yes, then we could change it.
Basically, the geometry today will be the geometry after 5A is done.
And let me just kind of add a little bit about, I mean, we are going over the width today, but I think the ultimate decision would be, if we are going with the federal funds, it's what our Caltrans approves. And right now, Caltrans has two criterias. Number one, they're looking, I mean, their standard criteria is 12-foot lane, eight-foot shoulder. And eight-foot shoulder could be reduced based on different criteria. We also have the bicycle criteria, that if we're going to have a bike lane on the bridge, we've got to have minimum five feet bike lane. And if we go, we could also say that it's a bike route. And bike route means that it's not a separate lane, but we still need a shoulder. And that shoulder could be whatever we like to decide. If we want to move the bicycle totally out of the bridge and mix it up with the pedestrian, the Caltrans standard is minimum 12 feet. That's a California standard. And that's what we are using for our trails. They are eight-foot paved with two-foot shoulder on both sides. So those are our options.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mo. So, that's very helpful. So I certainly don't want to see a 12-foot lane and an eight-foot shoulder and a 12-foot sidewalk, and that's, I'm looking at, again, on my laptop here, I have overhead view of the bridge, and, you know, so we don't have bike lanes on Main Street, and so I don't think we're going to have a bike lane on the bridge, that doesn't make any sense. All right. I'll score one for Kowalczek. And so, but that doesn't mean we don't need a shoulder, because, for safety reasons. For, so you called it a bike route, is what you called it, Mo, bike route. But certainly, we don't have bike lanes. And as I look at the overhead view, I also see the, you know, the, Main Street is wide enough, and north and south of the bridge, and then the sidewalks come in on both sides to kind of make that choke point around the bridge. So if we continued, basically, I'm trying to visualize this, if we continued the sidewalks across, is that about the width we'd end up at?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. As opposed to them, then jutting in, right? Okay. And so that's helpful. Then, I guess, one of my, almost, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions, but this is important that I understand this. The last question, I guess, is for Tony. What part of the bridge is, in fact, historic?
Well, I suppose the entire bridge structure would be considered an historic structure. In the historic resources inventory that has been compiled, I'm not quite sure who compiled it, but it is a list of historic resources in the City of Half Moon Bay. They describe the historic features of various buildings and structures in Half Moon Bay. The historic feature of this bridge is described as engineering. So it's a concept. I suppose that would mean that the reinforced concrete material is historic, as well as the arch construction.
And the grade and above-grade look features.
You know, the interesting thing is that when something is added to a list like that, there's not a detailed description of all of the, all of the components that should be preserved and those that might not be historic. My understanding, anecdotally, is that the rail was constructed later, and obviously, the pedestrian paths were both added at different times after the original bridge was constructed.
Thank you.
Rick, the pillar boxes were there since the 1920s.
They're very helpful. Thank you. And I don't have any more questions. My points I wanted to make were about geometry, which doesn't get fixed with repair. Well, first of all, I want to concede, repair of that structure, restoration is clearly viable. That was an assumption of the report, it's the assumption of the council, it is a viable option. Repairing the bridge does not fix the geometry or the safety concern with width. And I'll be really frank, I'm, safety trumps all in my book. And it's, I'll pay more for safety because that's the most important thing for anybody traveling on that bridge, on the bicycle, walking, whatever. I have the same concern up and down Highway 1 for safety, and you're going to hear me make a lot of noise about that, about future trails along the highway and people walking along the road. Then the, so width and geometry are the issue. About maintaining lanes, our second criteria, maintaining lanes of traffic, I believe there are other options that would maintain lanes of traffic, even if we went with a temporary structure. With regard to disruption, I think they're all noisy, they're all going to suck. And I think there's no doubt about that. Financially, I'm satisfied with the issues addressed there, that, although with future, if we repair it, then it's ours to fund decades down the road. And then environmentally, this is also a pivot point for me, is that the bridge not being in the creek is environmentally advantageous, and Coastal Commission supports that, and I also support that. And that's my perspective right now.
I want to clarify that, just slightly. We had a meeting with Coastal Commission staff. We asked Coastal Commission to identify the issues that they thought were the most important to them. Obviously, minimizing creek impacts and minimizing obstructions to the channel flow were identified by them as the most important. But we have not, for one thing, there's one thing to have an informal meeting where ideas are exchanged, it's another thing to go through the permit process. We might find a different environment when we do that, and obviously, we have not been in front of the commission itself. So I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that there's a Coastal Commission favored alternative out there. They've just given us some ideas of what they think would be important.
Thank you. That's very helpful, helpful clarification. And I guess my last point, and I just took my notes here, that the permitting process is, we'll have a project, we'll initiate that process, we'll go through CEQA, and changes will be made to whatever we decide, inevitably. Additional requirements will come into play. So whatever the thing is we decide on is going to change by the time they break ground. I think that's a given. Checking my notes real quick, I think that's all I have.
If I could just add something to that, too, as well? We're expecting that this will be, we'll do an initial study to assess what we think the potential environmental impacts are. We're expecting that to result in the recommendation that we do a full environmental impact report for this project. And part of that will be to consider alternatives to the project being analyzed as the preferred option. So alternatives to the project will still be open for discussion, even as you go through this process.
Great. Thank you. Important note. I guess my last comment is going to be about width. I'm not going to support anything wider than the sidewalks on north and south of the bridge. I think it's completely inappropriate. I think it's appropriate to think of safety, I think it's appropriate to think of geometry. I think it's inappropriate to make the bridge unnecessarily big. If the funnel is this wide, and the bridge is this wide, and I don't want anything wider than that, and I won't support that. That's my thoughts.
Yeah. I'd like to just bring us back a little bit to 5A and try to be practical about this. You're going to open up a very sick individual there, you know? And I'm just very fearful that when we open that bridge up, we're going to say, oh, my goodness, it's not repairable. And then what's going to happen? We've already given the money back, we're already going to be in, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to this community to ensure that our budget is balanced. And this is not going to be a million-dollar job. I can tell you, this is going to be four or five million-dollar job in the end. I'm just speculating. I want to be on the record for that speculation. Because those wing walls, and you bring in cranes, and you bring in jackhammers, and you bring in pile driving, it's not going to be a $100,000 project. And when you open it up, and then all of a sudden, it's unrepairable, I'm just speculating, okay? But I want you to know that we are on the hook for it, this city. And I can't be on the hook for future generations for funding, number one. Number two, I watched Secretary of Transportation Fox speak to the National Governors Conference, and he talked about infrastructure, and he talked about bridges. And he said, the longer you delay replacing a bridge, the more it's going to cost you all. And he really stressed that to the states of America. And I really believe that. And personally, I'm a very strong supporter of Option 2 at the moment.
Thank you, Rick, for all your comments. I mean, that was detailed, and I think that gave us a lot of information. And John, I'm a little weary, too. You opened that roadway bed, and if you see anything that's disintegrated, there is the chance the bridge is shut down right then and there. I don't think any of us are prepared for that. And we've talked a lot about the roadbed surface, but what about the supports? I mean, no matter what is done, those supports have to be fixed. Those are the things that are coming away from the side of the creek. Buttristed spandrels is the correct word, as you use? So could you talk a little bit more about the repair of those spandrels, and how they're eroding away from the creek?
Mayor Kowalczek, may I just introduce a procedural matter prior to him answering that question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We still, because it's a difficult decision, there still hasn't been a motion, and I'm sure once a motion is made, you all are going to still want to discuss that. Keep in mind that you have about half an hour left before you're going to need to vote to extend the meeting, or the meeting will end. The meeting ends at 11 o'clock, unless you take a vote closer to that time. So you have about 30 minutes left.
Thank you. Let's continue with the question, Marina, please. Let's continue as we're moving.
Yeah. Thank you. I think we're on a roll here.
I believe you're referring to the wing walls that extend and retain the roadway fill, and they're in various stages of disrepair. One of them really seems to be displaced. And some of the record drawings we have, what minimal drawings we have, show that that reinforcement doesn't even extend to the end of those. They're simply massive enough to maintain themselves there. But the fact that they've displaced a bit's a little discomforting. That's one of the concerns I have. If a lot of rain, or it gets saturated there, that wall can just move a bit, and the road slumps a bit, and then you're really in kind of a dilemma. You can't really, you have to at least close that lane and do something with that. Some of those options, the rehab options, sort of discuss repairing the wing wall as if it's a trivial matter. I don't think it, it's certainly doable, and it can be done from outside, possibly stressing it with cables, and embedding cables in the backfill, and sort of anchoring those walls as they are now. But if you remove them and replace them, of course, you have to retain that roadway fill in the meantime. And that inevitably restricts the roadway, maybe a lane, maybe more. So that, they sort of describe those fairly quickly, and I understand, these are all concepts, but those wing walls are pretty tall at the end of the bridge, so that's not a trivial effort there. And the other issue, I think, with 5A, and everybody seemed to agree, is we really don't have any idea what the foundation is. They appear to be They appear to be timber piles installed back in 1903, whatever it was. So they're probably not very long. And the bridge has lived through, as has been pointed out, a couple of significant earthquakes, so that's encouraging. But if there's liquefiable layer down there, and it's certainly saturated, it's coastal, if there's loose sands, then you could potentially have some settlement, maybe only two inches of settlement is enough to really stress that arch and those walls to the point where they continue to crack, and you have more subsidence. I think it's right that a catastrophic failure of an earth-filled arch is pretty remote. It's just, I think, significant damage due to differential settlement, one side settling more than the other, and that crack getting quite a bit larger, to the point where you're worried about retaining that roadway fill. And I think the prudent thing to do is to shut the road, and you're kind of in a position where, what do we do now? So I think Ramsey's right, we have to, in the rehab approach, you have to anticipate those potential problems and have a backup plan in place so that you don't then close the road and go back to the drawing board and waste more time.
And in working with those walls, I mean, we're in the creek, and that is challenging right there, because I know the Coastal Commission has issues with that.
And with the foundation, I sort of left that subject unfinished. I think everyone agreed that we needed to supplement the foundation with probably drilled shafts at all four corners, and sort of stress the existing, in other words, support the existing bridge. Because determining the condition of those timber piles, and sometimes it's surprising what good condition they're in, timber piles, if they don't see oxygen, a lot of times they're in pretty good shape. But they're, I'm sure they're very short, we've seen them, or they're generally 32 feet, and it could be, the liquefiable layer is deeper. So to investigate the subsurface and the possibility for liquefaction, and it may be mild liquefaction, even if settlement, shaking and liquefables and everything drops, or one side drops, then you get some significant damage. Even though you can still drive across the bridge, you know, you may only drop an inch or two, and it's a bump. But that's not catastrophic, but it's potentially, you know, starts some real deterioration. So I think everybody agreed, you probably drill four big caissons, if you will, in each corner, straddling the existing ends of the bridge, and stress it together, and basically they support the bridge. You discount any contribution from the timber piles. That's work in the creek, that's probably the most significant work in the creek.
Thank you.
I could just add to that, that your question was, what happens if we go with the rehab option, or repair option? So the plan would be that the work within the creek will be done during dry months, the foundation, the wing walls. And then also, as far as roadway repair work, and taking the fill out, that will be in the winter months, because that's when the bridge will be totally closed. Now, that's when we could find that our spandrel walls are not properly, or their joint width arch is getting weaker because the rebars are corroded or have gone. So that time, some additional work will need to be done inside the bridge to hold the spandrel walls to the arch. So that's where the closure could be extended.
Thank you.
Ellen? I think, as much as I think that 5A is doable, we've heard from several engineering firms that it appears that this rehab process can work, especially with all the visuals and so forth. I still think there's potential pitfalls with 5A. So my recommendation is, I don't know that we can take an action on anything until we've thoroughly investigated 5A through testing, through additional engineering studies, coming back to us and saying, we've got a 99% probability, this will work, we're not going to have the catastrophic thing. Or, they say if we take the roadbed, and there's an issue, we're going to add these beams, you know, other things we can do. So there's a Plan B. It might go for a month or two closure to three or four months, but again, it's in the winter season. But we'd all have to, if we're going to go for the possibility of 5A, excuse me, we have to go in with our eyes open. And everybody needs to know all the potential pitfalls. Again, it certainly sounds like it's a doable project, from everything we've heard from the experts. Will the cost go up? That's my guess. Let's face facts, too, I don't think we have estimated the cost for 5A. That's come from outside, am I right? Okay? So we need to have the engineers honestly evaluate 5A with some of the things we've talked about, adding the caissons, maybe doing reinforcing when the roadway's off, things that could happen, and I think we need to know what that total dollar figure is. If we have that in hand, then I think we can make an intelligent, reasoned decision. Is 5A workable, or not? And then, what's the other option? Two, three, whatever. But I feel we're lacking, and I, I'm sorry, I hate to see us spend more money on studies, but I don't know that we can, again, we can make our final decision without that information in front of us. And we've probably already spent, what, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars so far in this process, three engineering firms. But this isn't a simple decision, and clearly the community is very concerned about it. So I do think this extra time and effort will be worth it, to either say, 5A is not doable, and it's off the table, which I think then people could understand and respect, or it is doable, we've got expert opinions telling us that, and then we can make that final decision. But I don't think we're ready to do that without looking more closely at 5A.
Ellen, let me ask you a question. How do you resolve the safety concerns? Because I, so, because I don't think, so I take it as a given that the bridge can be restored. And just, a little money, a lot of money, I believe it can be restored. But how do you resolve the safety concern?
We currently have roughly 22-foot lanes. The hope is, after talking to some of the engineers, that the slab could be a little bit wider, we could get, say, two 12-foot lanes, 24 feet, which to me is doable. So I think lane width will be okay. I'm still bothered by the curve, I know some people like it, thinks it slows people down. I think it's the opposite. And if we ever had a serious accident after we did, say, 5A, who do you think the people would come after? They'd come after the city for not having fixed a deficiency, a safety deficiency we were aware of. But it's like anything else. You know, people go walking on the cliffs along the beach, and they don't read the signs, and they fall off the cliff. We're never going to be able to make things, everything 100% safety-proof. I think we do the best we can. I mean, the reality is, it's been there for 113 years, I don't think we've ever had a fatal accident on there. But, you know, that being said, that could change quickly. I do think that safety will not be as good as we would like it in terms of lane width, shoulders, and so forth. But at the end of the day, we've lived with this bridge for so many years, I think if we can widen it just a little bit, put on safe sidewalks, the water line, the power and so forth, I think that's a reasonable project. But until we have definitive information from the engineers to look at 5A, to do the testing, come back with a realistic cost estimate, I don't know that we can make a decision tonight without that.
So Ellen, you've made the assertion that we can get two 12-foot lanes in there. Can I have the engineers comment on that? Because I don't know that, I want to hear your take on that.
Through the chair, while they're thinking about it, I'd like to make a motion to keep this meeting going and keep the dialogue going.
Motion to second, Ellen, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Even though I have a 6:00 AM flight, but thank you. Thanks, Marina.
While you're reviewing that, staff, I'd like to also ensure that we are addressing the ADA compliance stuff.
That feature would be primarily in the pedestrian crossings and, the ADA compliance issue is with regard to the pedestrian walkways on either side.
Correct, but I'm sorry, since you had interjection on the question, so if, for 5A and restoring the bridge, does that include the wooden walkways, or not include wooden walkways? Because no, I'll tell you, no way I'm going to vote for wooden walkways for ADA reasons. So I don't know, what's the basis for?
I would assume that we would design the walkways to conform to ADA standards. And as we go through the permitting, when you look at the historic resource preservation standards, that may be, that may affect that, but I think the definition of the project would include ADA-compliant walkways. As to the feasibility of that, I'll leave that to the engineers to discuss.
Thank you. And sorry, Marina, I know we interjected over your question, so to your question.
Regarding the width currently, there are two little rounded curbs in front of the wall, and those are to deflect the car away from hitting the walls. And if those are taken out, you would basically have a vertical wall, and you would hit the wall rather than deflect away from it. And they're approximately about a foot wide, each one of them, which would give you 24 feet. If during the rehab option, 5A, when the deck is replaced, there potentially could be an opportunity to restore 24 feet, and maybe have a thinner wall section, or maybe can it leave that wall out a little bit to accomplish 24 feet? So that could be conceivably done, yes?
Okay, so possible, not sure yet.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Did we get the ADA question answered?
Yeah, so what I might take, and please correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard about the ADA, when you guys were conferring, there was a question about option 5A, would that meet ADA requirements for the walkways? If it's a restoration, the walkways are currently wooden walkways. I guess, I have the presumption that we would not replace those with wooden walkways, but we would design this to be ADA-compliant. Is that also your take?
Part of the 5A option would be to reconstruct the sidewalks to meet ADA, being ADA-compliant. So that would be more than likely a solid surface, like a concrete surface. The wood planks would need to be taken out.
John?
Would it not add more stress, then, to the structure that's 113 years old? Because it's going to have to be attached to that, you're not going to build a new bridge. I think Councilman Alafano thought he was going to put a new bridge across it.
That's why, in my opinion, 5A involves some rehabilitation of the spandrel walls, too. You're right. It would add load to the sidewalk, which would add load to the spandrel. In one of the meetings, it was brought up the ability to put in clear span sidewalks with piles on either end, and they would be two separate structures, independent from the bridge. When it's finished, they would look like they're part of the bridge, but they'd actually be standing on their own. And that's a point I raised earlier, when we go after historical money, then the issue could be raised, oh, you've radically changed the bridge, they're not hung off the way they were, but they weren't there from day one anyhow. But that's another pitfall I try to talk about when it comes to historical funding. But they would be separate, clear-span structures, am I correct?
So I think that is an aspect of Mr. McAdoo's option six, not of option 5A.
5A, well, you may know it better than I. 5A was not our work, but I'm not sure if it involved separate sidewalks or not. If it maintained the existing character of the bridge and can't leave it off the existing spandrel walls, then I think, yes, that would likely increase the load and increase the need to rehabilitate the spandrel walls and to support that water line more securely.
So the sidewalks, there is the option of, like what David is saying, to reinforce the spandrel walls and attach it off the spandrel walls. But there is the option also that you would have a separate system where you have the sidewalk parallel to the bridge, not tied into the bridge. So there are those options that could be integrated part of the 5A.
And again, that's my point here. We're working with a 5A that's been given to us to some degree, and there's some guesswork going on right now. And I don't think that we have in front of us a solid plan with a solid cost number with potential for, you know, for overruns. Because again, until that roadbed comes off, we don't know exactly what we're going to find there. I'd like to have all of that in front of us before we make our final decision.
I respectfully disagree. We have options in front of us that have all complete cost factors.
I don't think personally that 5A is something that I feel our engineers have vetted 100%. And until our engineers, I'm sorry, and no disrespect of other engineers, I don't consider it valid until the people that we've hired and paid come back with a detailed analysis along with the testing to say, yes, 5A is doable, and here's how. Or, they say, no, these are the problems. Then I think we can make an informed decision.
I would just like to add that option 5A was proposed by Biggs Cardoza Associates, and the proposal for the sidewalks was to either, I'll just read it, construct a new sidewalk on the side of the existing bridge, or new separate pedestrian bridge supported by an abutment and pile extensions. So it wasn't defined as to whether or not the new sidewalk would be physically attached to the existing spandrel wall versus being a clear span just supported by abutments on either end.
And by putting a pedestrian, separate pedestrian walkway, you're putting supports in the creek.
If it's a clear span, the abutments would be constructed on the sides of the riparian quarter, not adjacent to the existing piles that are driven underneath the arch structure. So presumably, the construction necessary for the sidewalks, if you built abutments and a span, would be outside of the creek. Similar to the option two or option three replacement projects.
But you still run the risk of opening that roadbed, and we shut the bridge down.
The bridge will definitely be shut down while the deck is replaced. And that, the estimate was six weeks to eight weeks, assuming that, you know, what we believe to be the condition of the interior structure is correct. We would do further testing before undertaking that project if option 5A is selected, and may discover that it needs additional work that might take longer.
That would be the risk, so you're saying six to eight weeks? Let's call it two to three months, honestly. But if there's anything wrong, it's longer? And we don't know.
We don't know, that's part of the, when you open it up, the discoveries of what you find inside of the bridge and what type of repair scheme is needed. So it's not known right now.
And no amount of poking holes here and there in the bridge can tell you until you remove that bridge, because depending upon where you poke the hole.
The poking of the hole would raise our level of confidence, but not eliminate all the risks.
Doesn't eliminate the risks.
Poking the holes is a legitimate approach. But I believe option five, part of their solution to keep water from infiltrating, they were going to go in and build a slab in there anyway. So once you've got enough of that removed, you may as well remove more of the soil and look at the barrel once the bridge is closed. I think that was the logic there, and maybe they don't intend to look at the whole barrel. But I thought they were thinking of possibly putting lightweight fill back in there to relieve some of the load, and then, or to compensate from some of the additional load of a concrete cap. And we've referred to a slab, there's no real slab out there now, there's
And we've referred to a slab, there's no real slab out there now, there's simply the two walls and it's dirt and AC pavement. Option five, they're recommending a slab to have an impermeable barrier, so no more water continues down to that barrel. So I think the logic is, if we're gonna get in there and dig out enough of that fill to put in a slab, let, or lightweight fill, or the combination, let's keep going and look at the barrel while we're in there. I, I think was their logic, and it makes sense. But you're right, then sometimes you don't wanna look at the, you don't wanna know what, what you might find. But keep in mind, there's also a couple of utilities in there. So even removing the soil, you gotta be careful, or remove the utilities, relocate them ahead of time. And then even if you leave them there, you recompact the soil, it's, you know, you gotta be careful, obviously. And I would think it would behoove the city that once you expose those utilities in there, maybe there's an opportunity to upsize them or to replace them, or what, whatever it may be. But that, that complicates the issue a little bit.
So one of my observations in touring the bridge yesterday was the repair that was done to the eastern face above the top center of the arch, are you familiar with that? Do you have any sense of what was done there? It's, it's vertically facing, the eastern vertical face above the top of the arch. It's on the, on the side. It's clear, it's a clear patch repair or something or another.
My understanding is that with all the water going through the bridge, the concrete was getting weaker or getting exposed. So it's a thin layer of concrete they put over that area under, under the arch.
I see, thank you. And, and so Alan, I appreciate your comments, and, but, I, I take it as a given that the bridge can be repaired and restored. But unless there's something that says that it can be made, safe, you know, functionally acceptable, that's, that's really a deal breaker for me. And when I compare options two to 5A, the bridge closure, actually, let me ask our engineers, could you compare, bridge, compare and contrast, bridge closure from option two, which is the, take it down and create a new one, through to bridge closure for 5A? And the difference I see between the two is that when you're done, it looks pretty similar, above grade, it's gonna have a historic look, but it's gonna meet safety standards for two versus 5A, which will not ever, unless we make, unless there's some variation you can do to it. I don't know if there's a variation you can do to it, but if it doesn't meet safety standards, I, I pretty much come down to, if we're gonna fix it, we're gonna do it right, and it's gonna meet safety standards, and that's where, that's where I'm gonna be. Or, or wait another year. Frankly, I, I don't wanna fix it wrong. I don't wanna fix it and spend a million dollars and not have a safe structure. And there, so let me, I'll withdraw my question, don't compare the direction, I'm fine with that. So then, and then Tony, I can envision and how, discuss the vulnerability of the city to receiving a letter that says, you knew in the year 2013 that the bridge was functionally obsolete. Billy got hit by, his bike got hit by a car. I mean, that just sounds super vulnerable. And so if we're gonna fix the bridge, we're gonna fix the bridge, otherwise, let's not fix the bridge, because it's absurd, it's absurd to fix it wrong. And so is, is that a real risk? I mean, we are aware that it is below that rating.
It's a dilemma that you always face when you're looking at a public facility. You want to identify and, and eliminate potential hazards, potential dangerous conditions that might cause injury and, and give rise to liability. When you identify them, however, then that places you on notice that, that there's a, a safety concern. And so if, you know, if a person is injured after it has been identified that it's a safety concern, then your risk of liability is higher. So it's sort of an, a, a reverse incentive to identify safety risks. You have to be very careful about doing it. In this case, you know, there's quite a bit of documentation indicating that, from a safety standpoint, this bridge is inadequate, starting with the Caltrans report, which identifies its, its functional obsolescence as really the primary issue of concern.
But I, I think I made all my comments, I don't have any more, at all. Marina?
Well, for me, you know, and going by, if we assume that, yes, the bridge is repairable, you know, safety has always been our number one issue we were concerned with. I think 5A, you're rolling the dice, and there's, there's still some unknowns with this. And there's still road closure with that. And the road closure could be just as, almost the same as a couple of options, or it could be far longer than, than a lot of these, and it would be unplanned. So I'm, I'm between two and five. And, and before, I, I really wanted to, because it was quick, people were telling us to do this fast. But then, you know, the merchants, and particularly the ones on that block, you know, had said they'd wanted one lane. So I'd moved off that, although I think there are so many advantages to doing this in, in six months. Promotion wise, you shut it down, you could be a pedestrian way, like many European towns. Kim could have tables out there from Pasta Moon. I mean, you could do a lot of promotions in six months. But, but I see the merchants don't want that closed at all. So I'm at the point of, I will make a motion for item number five at this time. I, I need a question answered on number five, because I had the same opinion that I, I liked option two and five. The only thing with five that I did not like was that the road was so wide. So is there a possible way that that, because I thought the road was pretty wide?
Just one second. Five is similar to 5A, in that it rehabs existing arch and adds a new arch, is five. So basically, but, but five has that same potential pitfall, in that you're trying to rehab the old arch. Once you pull the roadbed off, you know, you discover there's something wrong. I guess you might have to put in a whole new arch, if that's what it came down to. So five puts in a brand new arch to the west, puts, opens two lanes up, never shuts down Main Street, and then the next year you come along and you rehab the old arch. And you end up with a very wide bridge, because you've got two arches underneath there.
Yeah.
The one thing-
Because it eliminates parking.
The one thing I, I did hear, I don't know if it came out clearly, was the engineers are saying that possibly with three, option three, they might be able to accomplish this in one dry season. And I'm not sure if that came out tonight.
So that, so that didn't, but I, if I wanna follow up on this, this two versus five discussion, so that I know of a motion, but no second?
I'm, I'm open to more discussion on three.
Thank you. There was no, there was no second. So, so I want, so I shared earlier, like the engineers to comment, I shared earlier, it's an input I got from a Keywood construction engineer about the potential of putting in a Bailey Bridge or temporary structure along with our option two, which would, if feasible, does provide a path for traffic when the bridge is out. So then you get both temporary crossing and, and fast construction. And I also wanna comment that I wouldn't, I think, along with option two, discussed with Mo previously, the city engineer, about if we go with that option, putting in a temporary pedestrian crossing as well. And I'd like to comment on both the idea of a temporary road crossing for vehicles and a temporary pedestrian crossing that may go along with option two.
That is certainly a feasible option. And it's similar to the option three, but instead of putting a Bailey Bridge, you would be a temporary facility, would build the ultimate bridge where the Bailey Bridge would go, but it's certainly a feasible option to do.
And the reason, I believe that was suggested to me is that, because it's fast, right? It's speed for, speed for the road closure.
It, it could certainly be fast, because it's a portable type of a system. And, yes, but it still needs to have the abutments constructed and the piles driven, and preparation, and the road approaching it and departing it needs to be constructed. So there is some work that needs to be done ahead of receiving the Bailey Bridge. And that's about the same work that would also be for a permanent bridge.
With the exception that the replacement of the arch structure is much shorter, as described in option two, than in option three. Much shorter duration. And I'm, I'm all about fast. And Mo, could you share your comment about the ability to provide a temporary pedestrian crossing?
Well, we could have either as part of the Bailey Bridge, a pedestrian traffic crossing, or we could build a separate one, and that pedestrian crossing will end up on the northwest corner. And that's where the construction activity will be also. But it couldn't be done, yes. So that'll be only on one side of the bridge. And, so only one side from, from Main Street, either most probably the west side sidewalk, that's where the crossing will be. On the north, on the east side it will not.
Thank you. So that's my opinion. That, so my opinion is that option two, well, with the variation of maintaining a pedestrian crossing and a temporary vehicle crossing with a very short duration, and funds included for promotion for our downtown community, is the, is my opinion of what the best option is. And the trigger point for me is safety and the geometry of the bridge. I, I'm confident we can put enough signs or whatever, there's ways we can treat to slow down traffic. I don't want speeding going there. And I don't want it to be wider than our current sidewalks, north and south of the road. So that's another deal breaker. So it has to fit our town, and, and those are the factors I think make it the best option. And that's, that's my opinion.
A question. Ramsey, I think you were saying earlier that option three, instead of taking two dry seasons, could actually take place possibly in one dry season. Is that right?
Yes, we, we did the analysis, and the two-stage replacement can be accomplished in one season, provided that the contract is let out late in the year, and you have an award in early of the calendar year, where the contractor is able to mobilize, get all his paperwork and all of his materials lined up, and ready to jump in and do the work once the permit windows allow that to happen.
And that's not accounting for possibly night work, or longer days, or other incentives we could, we could pay extra for?
That, that's, we, we looked at a regular, you know, a schedule without any acceleration or night work or weekend work.
So let's, let's be, well, it might not be late, it might be, instead of setting it on at five or six, it might go to eight or nine. I'm just simply saying that there could be options. But option three, with what you're saying, never closes Main Street, it keeps, and I, when I say never, I don't mean for an hour or two or a half a day. It basically keeps Main Street, the Main Street Bridge fully operational in two directions, and then all construction, all construction is wrapped in one dry season.
Yes, with the provision, again, the contract is let out at the end of the calendar year for that you have a contractor on board. There will be some lane closures in order to bring in materials and do some of the utility work. So it's, I just wanna make sure that that's understood. But generally, we'll have the ability to have two lanes, one going into town, one going out of town.
And then once this is all finished, how wide would the bridge be?
The, as shown in this picture up here, there is a wide pavement that is being provided. And, so the, the end result is that when we do the detour for the two lanes as the first stage, there will be at the end additional pavements that would be in excess of what's needed. And I talked to Dave, and I talked about this, and it, it could be that some of that structure that's built would be temporary, taken out. And whatever the city and everybody agreed to would, through Caltrans and FHWA, is that, that could be ultimately put in there, and that you wouldn't end up with an extra wide structure.
So normally, we talk about 60-some feet, but what you're saying is we could narrow it down as we wrap the project, and get it back down to, I guess if you have 12-foot lanes and what, three-foot shoulders on a minimum, you've got what, 15, 30 plus bike and sidewalk. So we're talking by the time we're done, what, 50 to 60 feet?
Approximately, yes.
I'm ready.
I'd like to-
There's no mo, the point of order, there's no second to the motion, so there's no motion on the floor.
I thought it was seconded.
No.
Oh.
If there's a motion and a second, then we could discuss it further. So, you know, after huge deliberations and studies, and with tremendous respect for the huge support for 5A, I, I just personally cannot take a chance on 5A. I think we are taking a huge risk, spending everyone's money for something that we just, it's a pig in the poke, in my opinion. So with those comments, I would make a motion based on the company evaluation of nine construction options, measured against ranked criteria established by the council at its April 9, 2013 special meeting. Staff recommends that the council select, and I will change it, option two, a one-stage replacement, and direct staff to begin to proceed with design and environmental reviews, reviews and permitting processes.
There's a motion. May I add a caveat?
You need a second, Phil.
Was, is there a second?
I will second with some comments, which I believe, oh, that would include creating a pedestrian walkway and a temporary vehicle crossing at the time, and construction will not be at night to disturb residents or the hotels, businesses.
Motion is second with amendments, is that acceptable? John?
Option two, with the pedestrian walkway, with a temporary vehicle crossing, and we do not want overnight work on the bridge to disturb businesses, residents, or the hotels.
And for clarification, Marina, when you say pedestrian crossing, you mean a, a temporary pedestrian crossing at the, at the time of construction? So we maintain an ability for traffic and pedestrians to cross the bridge, to cross the creek?
Maker's amendment.
Alan? I'm sorry, Laura?
Oh.
Is there a procedural question?
There's a procedural question. It's to the city attorney. There are some items in a resolution that you had presented to them. Do you need to incorporate particular items in the resolution?
I need to make some minor revisions to the resolution. So continue your discussion while I work on that.
For discussion, I'm curious if, if in fact this is what we're looking, what you're recommending, I'm curious why we don't go with option three with everything being done in one dry season, 100%. I mean, I think that's what Ramsey just described.
So I don't know, I'll speak for myself, and two reasons. I prefer option two to three is that that was, up until four days ago, it was an 18-month project. With the potential, if we time it right, and the wind blows the right way, we can do it in one dry season. But that was originally a two-dry-season project- But that was originally a two-dry season project when we originally had the report. So with the potential, it could be done in one. And even done in one, it is still a longer-duration project than option two. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think I should mention that when you throw in the Bailey Bridge, you're dragging it out. Also, some of the expedited construction was based on the contractor not dealing with public traffic coming through his, his workplace. Some of the expedited schedule associated with option two was based on he's got a clean slate, the road's closed, it's his. So I think when you, when you add the Bailey Bridge, not only the construction and the eventual removal of it, but also the interference and even somewhat increase in, in safety, public and contractor, then I don't think we're, we're prepared to say it's now still the fastest.
Well, that's important.
One, one thing I'd like, I'd like to mention is that the Bailey Bridge, if we put it parallel to the existing bridge, it might have some geometry issues that we cannot provide a larger footprint of the bridge. And the Bailey Bridge would have to be offset to the west, which might be some, there might be some difficulties in that. We haven't really looked at that, like David was saying.
Yeah, when that traffic curves in, it has to curve in.
Significantly.
And, and take some of those parking, maybe the sidewalk in, in front of the, the, I mean, it's.
Important caveat, right?
It's tight, yeah.
So, so I think we need to consider that, right? So I, I mean, you, you know who I spoke to at Keywood, right? So that was his thought, but that was also his thought, just surveying the site, not doing engineering analysis.
Well, while we're discussing this issue, you know, we're throwing around this Bailey Bridge information. I mean, we're talking World War II technology. So, you know, this is not just on Bailey Bridges and running tanks across them. You know, this is a big project to, to put those in. It's not like, I, I don't envision what the, other than the movies, what they look like now, but.
Pretty much the same.
And great-grandfather, great-grandpa at home, he, he did installation of them. So maybe we could ask him tomorrow what he thinks of the Bailey Bridge. But I still feel that my motion stands.
So, thank you. And Alan, those are important comments. I appreciate your questions. So is there something else to add?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I would move that we.
We already have a motion.
So procedurally, with a motion on the floor, there, there can be a second motion.
I can make a second motion.
Correct.
I think you need to vote on the motion.
So procedurally, my, my understanding was if there's a motion on the floor and there's a second motion, that motion takes precedent over the first motion.
Right.
But I, I look to our city attorney to, or Naomi.
Well, my understanding is that if there's a motion and a second on the floor, then you can't simply assert a competing motion. You have to vote on the motion that's on the ta, on the floor. And, and then if it fails, a competing motion can be made unless the maker of the motion, the first motion, wants to withdraw it.
Yeah, and I think my experience in, in, in leadership is you cannot have two motions on the floor under Robert's Rules of Order. You can only have one. Is that correct? You just finished leadership?
It depends on which rules you're following.
Yeah, we had, we had Judge Roberts show up.
Okay, so what if we give council member Alafano a shot and you got to get a second for your motion?
That's what I had planned. I would move that we direct staff to further explore option 5A to see, to, to look at the testing and give us a updated current cost estimate based on probably the most pessimistic conditions. And secondly, to also compare that and look at option three being completed in one dry season and what the feasibility of that would be. And then I think from that information, we can make a much more informed choice between 5A and three.
A motion, is there a second? I'll make the comment that if safety were addressed, I would support that, but it's not.
Call for the question.
A motion and a second. And may I offer, may I comment, John? So I'll present it to the council, this question, and Alan made a fine point on, and engineers did as well, when you add that concept of temporary bridge. And the reason why I like temporary vehicle bridge is because at the end of the day, when we're done, I want the bridge to fit the walk, existing roadway. I don't want it to be any bigger. And I, and I believe option three makes it bigger. Correct? And so the only place I get hung up, I, I support this motion. The only place it got hung up is making sure it's, it is in fact the most advantageous for, in terms of speed. And I believe that it is, based on everything that, that I've been hearing. But if it's not, I'd like the engineer to, to say it's not.
I, I think two is, is probably still the fastest, but maybe not as fast as it's indicated in, in the chart.
Got it. Thank you very much. And with that.
And before you call for the question, I'd like to request or rec, or suggest that you approve the resolution as I'm about to describe it being modified. First, to delete the last two whereas clauses. And secondly, under the now, therefore be it resolved, that staff is hereby directed to initiate environmental review, regulatory permitting, permitting and design processes, including review under SEQA and the City of Half Moon Bay zoning code and, and the City of Half Moon Bay LCP, LUP of the project described in option two with the features that Marina described, temporary pedestrian walkways and vehicle crossing and restricting work at night to protect restaurants and hotels.
So is stated.
And residents.
With, Naomi?
The question to the motion is if indeed you are still going to keep in the temporary bridge and the crosswalk, it's still, so the time will be a little bit longer, but is that okay if it's fastest? Okay. Yeah, I want the fastest.
So I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Phil, please.
No. Yes.
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 Yes. But with that, I want to make the comment that I appreciate the massive amount of work that went into this from our staff and from the community and from specific members of our community that spent real time and effort on this. And I hope everybody appreciates the pivotal factor of safety.
Ah, hold on!
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the last item of the evening.
Okay, so before you tonight is the draft response to a grand jury report entitled, Samhitaught County Special District Who Is Really in Charge of the Taxpayer's Money? Is it not going? Okay. The mosquito district embezzlement is at the tip of the iceberg. The Samhitaught County Mosquito Abatement District is a district that provides mosquito and vector control to all Samhitaught County cities and unincorporated areas. The district has a budget of approximately $6 million, which is funded from property taxes, partial assessments and benefit assessment. Recently, there was a high-profile embezzlement case in mosquito abatement district which prompted.
Siobhan, just hold for a minute, please. Can we please clear the room? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Siobhan. Thank you. Please continue.
There was a high-profile embezzlement case in 2012 that affected the district, which prompted a grand jury report to examine the mosquito abatement district's management practices, oversight, and particularly in their financial areas. The grand jury report was released on July 18, 2013, and the City of Half Moon Bay is required to respond to this grand jury report by October 16, 2013. That response needs to happen at a regular city council meeting. Staff is prepared a draft response for you to provide input, and there are many, many findings in the report. There are 14 findings and 11 recommendations. I won't go through all of the findings and recommendations, but in general, they fall into a couple of categories. One is operational concerns of the district with inadequate policies, procedures and oversight, and the potential for cost and efficiency savings should the district dissolve and revert back to the Samhitaught County Environmental Health Department. Our staff recommendation is to review the draft response, provide input to staff regarding the findings and recommendations contained in the grand jury report, and adopt a resolution approving the draft response. Thank you.
Let me make a comment on the, the LAVCO. Hearing that the last time we had it, because I, I sat on LAVCO at the time, the reason why I voted, the way I voted was the Dean Peterson in charge of Samhitaught County Environmental Health said he did not want to take the mosquito abatement district back. So in accordance with LAVCO rules, if that body does not want to take them back, then you cannot force that body to take them back. So that was the reason why I voted in maintaining the mosquito district, because it's a valuable service here, especially on the coast with the farmers and making sure that we don't have the mosquitoes or, or the vectors. So that I'm not sure now what the county is going to do because Dean really doesn't want it back. But I agree. I, I think, you know, the mosquito abatement, it wasn't handled correctly. The best thing they would have done was if they would have released the general manager. Yeah.
Through the chair. Having followed this when this was ongoing, when Naomi was in LAVCO, I have to admit, I was shocked with the, the documents that were being unearthed, credit cards charged for previous attorneys and everything else. At a minimum, my own personal opinion, I thought if the district had replaced the general manager or the, the district manager and changed it from a 21-board system down to say either five or seven, I, I would have felt like they were making progress. But with the same general manager in charge, no change in the, in the way it's being managed by a 21-person board, I truly believe that LAVCO needs to relook at this. Hopefully, the county now is going to reassess it. And, and I was told at our last meeting that the person doing this is somebody new. And I guess there's other options besides dissolving them and hopefully the county taking over. I heard another one where they could become a special district attached to the county, which would then give the, the county purview. So I definitely feel this needs to come back to LAVCO. Exactly how it happens, I'm not sure. I don't know if one city can ask for this or if we need to have a majority of the cities. I, I'm not sure of that process.
The LAVCO report, which I, I can provide to you, says that any agency or individual city can make that application. There's a resolution that the council would need to pass, making that appeal to LAVCO. So you don't need a majority of cities.
Okay. I would then recommend to the council that we direct LAVCO to relook at this after the county has finished their analysis. But I definitely think LAVCO needs to relook at what action should happen with the mosquito district.
So just as a point of clarification, I think that's a valid discussion to have, but it's really a different agenda item. I think you, you could discuss that in the context of responding to the, the findings or the recommendations of the grand jury. So I think that should be the focus of your discussion for, for this evening.
So it's the, the grand jury report, but separate and distinct from that. You know, I don't know that they need to have a big board. I, I think this is fine, being part of a county in a county job for, for one or two people. I don't think it has to be another special district or anything. But, so we're just accepting the grand jury report right now?
Well, there's a, a recommended response to the grand jury's report. You have to respond to the grand jury's report indicating whether or not you agree or disagree with their findings and whether or not you intend to accept their recommendations.
What do we have to do legally for that? Accept it? As a report? And then come back? We can accept it?
Yeah, you will need to approve the response or provide some input if you want to change the response. The response, the city's response is due back to the grand jury by October 16. So in the context of this report, we do need to, to do that. But if you would like to change the response or add something to the response, particularly that finding relating to, you know, future, looking at other options for a district, you could do that. But the context tonight is the, the actual response to the report.
But I understand. And I, so I would recommend that we move to approve the response to the grand jury report, say, Samhitaught County Special Districts, Who's Really in Charge of Taxpayer Money? Mosquito Abatement District Embezzlement, is this the tip of the iceberg? And ask staff to agendize this for future council discussion in terms of a recommendation to LAVCO. Is that?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with Marina on that one, I think. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I adjourn our meeting. And thank you for everybody for attending, and thank you for staff, all your hard work. And John, I hope you feel better. Good night.
I love that, yeah.